Good evening, everyone. It's 7:00 PM and I'd like to welcome you all to tonight's council meeting. I'm now going to call the meeting to order. I have the roll call, please.
Councilor Inman.
Here.
Councilor Callahan.
Present.
Councilor Christopher.
Yeah.
Councilor Terry.
Yeah.
Councilor Boyage.
Here.
Councilor Bloom.
Present.
Councilor Gavento.
Yep.
Vice President Boncory.
Here.
President Sanford.
The minutes of our August 15, 2017 council meeting were circulated. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion has been made to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, there was one vote taken that marked you present in the ward. And it's under oath business.
Why would I put this on?
You were absent on all the other votes, and just the one vote here. Gotcha.
Okay.
Any other additions, corrections, deletions? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or opposed, or so ordered. We have three public hearings before the council tonight. The first public hearing is a transfer of $102,000 from the capital stabilization fund to school capital purchases. Is a proponent here?
Mr. President, I think I can speak on it. It's a cleanup vote from when we did the 2018 budget. We made a $102,000 move of monies into the school capital line item. Since then, we have stabilized our -- we have adjusted our accounts and that money will be coming from the capital stabilization for school capital purchases. It's a cleanup vote. We voted last week to move the $102,000 out of this account, out of the account into this account that now has to go back into a different account. It's a bookkeeping situation. No monies. It's just what line that the money's drawn from.
Any public want to be heard on that public hearing? Yes?
Because I don't understand what the council -- I mean, I was involved in this and I don't understand what you're saying.
The account we voted the money from?
Karen, do identify yourself.
Oh, Karen.
Anyone speaks, please. Identify yourself, tell us your precinct so that we have that on record.
The account we voted the money from at the time was 20 -- it was in an account, it's in the bank, we just voted the wrong account.
Oh, okay.
To take it out of, so we couldn't put it now into the right account.
So it's still coming out of the capital stabilization?
Yes, yes. But the vote, when we took the vote, we did the budget, we didn't vote the exact, the proper language. This is to clean it up so it goes, it comes out of the right pocket.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other people that want to be heard in public hearing?
Okay.
If none, I want to stand a motion. Close the public hearing.
Oh, not for that. Is it a different matter?
No, this is just on the public hearing on the $102,000.
Okay. Any public hearing?
No.
No.
All right. So close the public hearing. Second public hearing is a petition from National Grid to put a new PVC conduit in the Cross Street installation from pole 1731, which is going to service the lights of the new football field. Is a proponent here?
I did see the National Grid gentleman earlier. How you guys doing? My name's Brendan Powell. I'm an engineer at National Grid, 170 Medford Street in Malden. This petition is to feed the athletic facility. We'll be digging under the sidewalk, not crossing the street, and installing two four-inch PVC ducts.
Any questions for the gentlemen from National Grid?
We also did discuss this at the Miller Field Committee and it's extremely important that this get done in the timely manner to help make sure that the field is open on time.
Any of the public want to be heard in public hearing? Seeing none oppose the public hearing on this issue. The next public hearing is on the reorganization of the Public Health Department to include the CLEAR program. This has been an issue that the town, previous town manager brought forward to the council. Councilor Callahan held hearings on this and I believe it's coming before, but do you want to explain the situation, what CLEAR program is? Councilor Callahan.
Sure, okay. First of all, the abbreviation for CLEAR is Community and Law Enforcement Assisted Recovery. And it's a program providing oversight and direction to the peer recovery coaches and the social worker hired to provide directed social services to those suffering from substance use disorder. We have two peer recovery coaches, a male and a female, that have been working for the town of Winthrop. They started out working for like 10 hours a week and now with additional funding and grants and so forth, they're now working 3 to 5 hours a week. So this program is to bring them onboard full-time as employees of the town of Winthrop. And they work very closely with the police department, the fire department, CASA. And if anyone was here last week, there was an unbelievable 2-hour-on-the-lawn dedication to all the people that are working so hard to fight drug abuse, who have gone through this program, who have met the two peer recovery coaches that have helped them so much. They have somebody to go to, someone to, you know, to guide them, to help them, get them back on their feet. The program is really very, very important, not only in this community, but all over the country. You know, if you open up the newspaper or you put the TV on, all you see is someone else is dying, some is, you know, bad drugs being circulated, all of the above. And we've had far too many deaths in this town already. So we're hoping to get this program up and running under the leadership of the Public Health Department, actually a new department is going to be divided and I'll give a little report later on. But that's what this is about and we just need, I think it's $18,650 to be added to the budget to fund this program, to keep it going. So that's what this motion is about.
So everyone knows what the reorganization plan is. I think Councilor Callahan described it pretty accurate. But the Health Department, as we have it now, is going to be split up into an inspectional services department, it's going to be headed by Al McGee, and into a medical, clinical, and drug situation, it's going to be headed up by our nurse, Mrs. Fredrick. So that before it was all under one and it was all under Al McGee and now it's going to be separated into inspectional services and medical and mental health. And that's what the rights of reorganization.
It's called the Office of Health and Social Services. And then the Office of the Commission of Inspection Services is the other division.
Does any of the public want to be heard in the public hearing on the reorganization? Mr. Smith, please identify.
Yes, Bill Schmidt, Precinct 5, Vice Chair of the Board of Health. I just wanted to state that I'm in favor of this reorganization. I think it's a great improvement for the town. I want to commend Councilor Callahan, everyone else who supported her, the chief, Senator Hugge. Now, Congress.
Does anyone else in the public want to be heard on it? Do any councils have anything to add? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing on the reorganization of the Public Health Department. And I will now call on Chief Flanagan for the purposes of a presentation.
Do you guys want to move in a little bit? There's snakes here. I feel bad that people are outside. I can't help it, I just thought if we scooted in, we could maybe.
Chief. What do you guys? That's Fire Chief, it's so hot, why don't you guys come out for the --
But again, I appreciate you'll have to deal with it. This was on the agenda a couple of weeks ago and it got postponed until tonight. This letter here is addressed to the Town Council, the Winter Fire Department Promotions. Tonight, promotions were created by the reassignment of Captain Richard Swatz as he was reassigned to the Metro North Regional Emergency Communications Center. For those who don't know, we were several years in opening a 911 center with Revere and it is done and it's working out very well through the efforts of Captain Swatz. With that, a few openings were opened in the Winter Fire Department. So tonight, we are pleased to promote firefighter Joseph Kalinas to the rank of Fire Lieutenant. Joseph Kalinas was appointed to the Winter Fire Department on August 13, 2012. He became an acting Fire Lieutenant on February 22, 2017, and a permanent Fire Lieutenant on 6/10 of 2017. Joe enlisted in the U.S. Navy and served 3 years active duty and 2 years in the Navy Reserve. He has an associate's degree in fire science from North Shore Community College and is currently working on his master's degree in fire science at Salem State University. He is a member of the Metropolitan Boston Urban Area Search and Rescue Team and holds numerous certifications in both fire and rescue continuing education from the Massachusetts Fire Academy. Joe, again, he's a young guy, he's come up the ladder quick. We've always told our firefighters, you know, study, you never know when there's going to be an opening on the department. Captain Swatz going over to help us get the regional dispatch signer up on his feet and really looking out for winter, you know, but these two gentlemen had both studied on the civil service, spent months studying, they both topped their exams and they had just a pleasure. It's a Fire Chief's dream to appoint two guys that, you know, exemplary attendance, they're very reliable, they're at every community event, whether it's Veterans Day on the town hall lawn, Memorial Day down on the cemetery, or it's just work done. It's these guys that keep our buildings up and running and habitable. And again, Joe is one of them. Tonight, Joe's wife Shannon is with us and I think his oldest son Jackson, and he has one other son home, Caden, that's not here today. So. Don't stress yourself, but the Fire Department runs under the radar screen a little bit and we're trying to get you folks to attach a face to these promotions. You see them around town and you'll always see these two around town. We have a problem, they come running. The second appointment was Lieutenant Stephen Landers promoted to the rank of Fire Captain. He was appointed to the Winter Fire Department February 27, 2006. He was appointed to firefighter in 2006. He was appointed to Fire Lieutenant on March 2, 2012, and became acting captain on February 22, 2017. We are pleased to promote him to Captain on 6/10 of 2017. Captain Landers holds numerous certificates in both fire and rescue continuing education courses from the Massachusetts Fire Fighting Academy. He has his 11 years in the Winter Fire Department, he has unblemished attendance, he is never called in sick for duty, and he too is a key asset to why the two firehouses are up and running. Again, it's a great pleasure to promote these two guys and it's a great win for both the town and my department. Over the years, and you know, fitting that mission, Chavez was up, I've gone to the finance committee year after year. I lost a firefighter to swampsuit, I lost 12 firefighters to mass port. These guys have made a commitment to the community, they're shining, they work hard, they attend all these courses on their own. And from a Fire Chief's perspective, they're all about community service and that was why we wanted to bring them forward to meet the council. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Quick picture.
Thank you.
Let me share up from under my words.
It was there.
Yeah.
Okay, a couple of you might as well sit. Jim, have a seat.
Yeah, here.
Yeah.
Have a seat.
The rest of you all squeezing like each other.
Move it down this way this way.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Moving right along, our next presentation is a presentation by the Parks Committee. We have representatives of the Parks Committee here.
He's somewhere.
I'm not sure, Josh is here, is this okay?
Good evening. My name is Linda Bressard and I'm here with the current Parks Committee. I thank you all for your time tonight, I know you have a lot on your agenda. We're here tonight to discuss with you that current Parks Committee was established by Peter Gill back in 2012 and was originally chaired by Don Sullivan and has been incredibly successful. The current Parks Committee is taking steps to establish a 501(c)(3) status. Moving in this direction will enable us to continue with our brand, the logo that we have developed and would enable more opportunities for fundraising. At this point, we feel that we have reached a saturation point with our current supporters. We would like the continued support of the town and the DPW for future projects and would like to request the dissolution of the current Town Parks Committee and we would also like to continue using the Winter Parks Committee name. The reasons for the move to 501(c)(3) are enabling the committee to continue to move in a positive direction, allowing for further opportunities such as grants, corporate donations, and a tax-exempt status, enabling the Parks and Rec Department to focus solely on their department. Currently, the Parks and Rec Department shares this time with the Parks Committee. And lastly, we would not want to compete with an existing group such as the Town Parks Committee if this committee is not dissolved in favor of the 501(c)(3) group. Viking Pride is one example of a successful 501(c)(3) in Winthrop and we would like to further our success with continued focus on playgrounds and park beautification and broaden our opportunities as a 501(c)(3) group.
Have, I know you're bringing this to us for the first time. Have consultants that have looked at this and said that that would be a better way for you to get money to fix the parks rather than the town which has been supplementing your money that's raised for the parks?
Actually, one of our Parks Committee members is a 501(c)(3) expert and has brought a lot forward, saying that this will really broaden our horizons. Currently, the fundraisers that we're doing kind of reach out to the same people over and over. With the Family Fund Night, 5K races, and other fundraisers that we're doing, we are kind of reaching out to the same group of people. And with the 501(c)(3) status, for the last 5 years that we've been running the committee, we've seen things online for grants, state grants for parks and playgrounds and things like that, that we have not been able to apply for because we don't have that 501(c)(3) status. And we feel like there's so much more that we want to do with the playgrounds. We have a lot of big ideas and, you know, other projects that we have in our line of sight that we would like to move forward with, that are going to need a lot, probably a lot more money than we're going to be able to raise as just our committee.
So you're asking the council to bring forward a motion, probably at the next meeting, to dissolve with the Parks Committee. Is that correct?
Right.
And then you'll just be on your own and you'll start your own 501(c)(3).
Right. We're asking for the dissolution of this current case and allowing, you know, enabling us to move forward as a 501(c)(3) status, but still have support from the town and the DPW who have been so supportive with all of our projects. But we would still need the support from the town and from the DPW for our future projects.
Is that, and now that's part of the problem. Because I don't know if you're not a committee of the town, if legally we can use town funds outside without getting, you know, something for supplemental pay.
I would like a review of supplemental pay, our town attorneys, again, where the charter allows the president to appoint committees. And we might have issues there that it's on a charter review, 5 years review of the charter, that we might have to wait to that time if there were the change like this to happen. So we should get our legal advice on the pros and cons of the 501(c) and all keeping it on the town side. When is the appropriate time we can transition that if the council chooses to do so?
Is there any other council having questions? Please, council.
And this would be also for an opinion on, if it was supposed to happen, should we have an MOU with the nonprofits so that there's some type of, because we have budget items that are already included in the town funds and how those, that interaction would occur?
Certainly, and they might come up with some recommendations as well for the Parks Committee to consider as an alternative to a full separation. Friends of Senior Center is certainly one example of an independent group that helps fund the activities down there. So we'll work with the Parks Committee and with that legal opinion in the council if they so desire, please.
Peter?
Councilor Chris, do you know of any other cities or towns who have done anything like this that we can maybe follow the program after?
I do not do.
I noticed that this lady had her hand up. Is she a part of your committee?
I'm a member of the Parks Committee, yes.
Okay, then come up here and you can help with the presentation.
There's a lot of people in here.
Yeah, but it's not just, you know, the general public can't speak about the park presentation, but a committee member can.
Okay. My name's Kay O'Dwyer and I work with Linda Bressard. We're volunteers on the Winter Parks Committee and it's been really great. Just to answer the legalese questions, we have retained counsel from Ropes and Gray, Lee Frasier, has done all of our work pro bono. I will make those materials available to the committee. I did send a memo in advance to the meeting that outlines some of the particulars that Linda's already really articulated. We also have a pro bono attorney out of Springfield, Massachusetts, Moriarty and Primack, Sam Moriarty. And I did my master's program in creating nonprofits, so that's what I do. I'm a fundraiser for Boston Ballet, that's my job. I raise lots of money for ballerinas. And it is my professional opinion that we can raise more money for the Parks Committee if we are 501(c)(3). We can apply for more grants, individuals and corporations will be able to receive a tax-exempt credit, a tax-exempt, as a tax-exempt organization, they will receive a tax credit. And currently, the support that we're looking for is not financial. We're not going to be able to do operating, administrating, planning, that is the town's business. Sean Driscoll is doing a great job at the Parks and Rec Departments of running the Parks and Playground. But we are a fundraising committee, so it follows that we should have all of the benefits and opportunities of being a 501(c)(3) so that we might raise more money for our Parks and Playgrounds.
Anybody else have any questions, other?
I have a comment. You know, it sounds like this is really separating the roles between running the Parks and Rec program and the fundraising. And that if the committee were organized as a 501(c)(3) and could raise more money and then hand it over to the town for the benefit of the parks, you know, similar to, you know, a lot of the work that Viking Pride does, I think it's a great, a great structure to look into.
It will be. And the Parks Committee has done an outstanding job. The Parks that we've made and rebuilt are gorgeous and it's thank you to your committee and to our Parks Department and to, you know, our DPW Department that have made our parks gorgeous and we've really come a long way. I don't seem to have a problem with it, but I think we have to check the legality of it. We have to have some kind of memorandum of understanding between this 501(c)(3), when it's organized, and the town of Winthrop before we can do anything. And even if you give us money, I mean, we still have to have the control over what's going in the park with the DPW and the Parks Department, the people that are actually working in the town, I believe.
Yeah, we just want to raise a lot of money. Yep.
That's a wonderful thing. We like that.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you for the presentation. We'll make sure that that's on the agenda at the next meeting. The president, the town manager, that we.
I'm going to send off the K P.
Yes, okay, excellent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We are now at public comment, which is, you can speak about any issue that is on your mind. And I'm sure that that's why most of you are here, is for public comment. So that is now open.
Okay, so I'd like to.
Come over to the front so we can see and hear you.
So I'm Babi Pividi and I'm a member of Beautification Committee. And I just wanted to speak really quickly about the destruction recently at Hanford Park, where it seems like a car went through a newly renovated railing, parking railing, and went up onto the lawn. I took some pictures and just, it just happened within the last couple of days because there are some DPW barriers there. And the reason why I'm here is, those are just several pictures, I mean, I could have taken a lot more. But the reason why I'm here is that over the years, the Beautification Committee has recommended that we have either a camera or there was a gate there at one point and that was taken away. But, you know, the parks are closed at dusk and so this kind of destruction happens after dark. And other things have happened at this park, it's kind of isolated, you know, some vision kind of.
A road law.
Yeah, of course. And so, you know, I'm just urging you to consider a camera, a gate, something to preserve this lovely space that we have. And I'm glad I'm following the parks. Because we have a beautiful spot and it's, you know, I don't understand why we don't protect it better. So that's why I'm here.
Thank you. And thank you for running the Beautification Committee. I saw you in the east corner picking up the trash and cleaning up that square.
Picking up the trash.
And you're a committee and you do a great job. I thank you for that.
Yeah, you're welcome. But, you know, the thing is, is it's about all of us and it's about where we live. And so we have, like, the park, the playgrounds have been renovated and we have lovely parks for a small town. And I really think it's important that we take care of them. And part of taking care of them is watching what happens like after dark, especially in isolated places. And so I'm here to, you know, for all of us and I'm hoping that something can be.
Maybe I tell me that you can talk to the chief of police.
Put it. This is so perfect.
The problem is, is the money aspect of cameras is certainly an expensive proposition on isolated spots such as that area. But we can talk about security with the chief and the DPW director and come up with a plan.
That would be so great.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks a lot for listening.
It's very, thank you.
Good night.
Any other public comment?
Jim Murray, Precinct 6. I'd like to talk about the Agri Room Study. Some of the business owners, of which I am one in the center. Stand up. I'm a business owner in the center with my wife and her partner and we're concerned that some of the language on social media and communications with the Town Council leads us to believe that the proverbial train has left the station on the project. We keep hearing about businesses not needed in the center by people on committees, especially the Transportation Committee. Now, I know that the council appoints the committees, so we would like to know it. Those people that are speaking out speak for the council when they say there are too many liquor stores and too many nail salons in the center. Because those businesses, after all, bring in hundreds of people a day. Without them, you'd see a lot less people in the center. Not only that, they're the people that encourage their customers to go to the restaurants, to go to the nail salons, to go to get coffee while they're waiting, to bring their dogs, to do banking. So we're concerned that some of the language being used is very detrimental to our businesses and we just want to make sure that we're going to get a fair shake when this study goes. And with that, we want to make sure the transportation person that we've hired gets an opportunity to examine the details of the study also, so that everything will be out of the public.
Thank you. Now, of course, public comment is not a time for answering back and forth.
Yes, sir, I believe.
But we have put in a new social media policy probably about 3 meetings ago. And anyone that is on any committee that is violating.
So we're concerned that some of the language being used is very detrimental to our businesses. And we just want to make sure that we're going to get a fair shake when this study goes. And with that, we want to make sure the transportation person that we've hired gets an opportunity to examine the details of the study also so that everything will be out of the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, of course, public comment is not a time for answering back and forth.
Yes, sir, I believe.
But we have put in a new social media policy probably about three meetings ago. And anyone that is on any committee that is violating that social media policy should and will be dealt with by the town manager's office. But no one speaks for the council but the counselors themselves. If we have something to say as an individual, we'll say it as an individual. But, you know, we speak usually as a council after a vote. And that vote that we took to make that a pilot program was just that. It's a pilot program and it'll be more, much more prominent when it becomes a permanent issue. But going. Go ahead, join, head and up.
Thank you, councilor. Thank you for the opportunity, all of you, for the opportunity to speak. My name is John Zetleyal. I'm in Precinct 5. In the past couple of weeks, I've been somewhat more familiar with the Hagman Road closure and the attendant elimination of about 50 parking spaces in the center. Only because I've been sort of forced to do so by some of the businesses that I continue to do business with on my own for private purposes and have been doing so for a long time. And I must say that I'm very disappointed with what I seen and taken aback by the whole Hagman Road progress. And I would like to urge the council to, by the way, hearing tonight for the first time, thank you for our new town manager for letting me know for the first time that this is only an experiment that is going to end by November 1st. That's news to me that I'm just here for the first time. It's good to know. We need to start working on alternatives. Alternatives, by the way, that were actually included and for some reason were skipped over by the town and, you know, well before the draconian measure of Hagman Road was put into place. And these are extracts right from the master plan itself. And we, I certainly accept, for example, one of the major premises of the master plan for the center, which is that French Square is a potential cornerstone jewel, if you will, if I'm correct, of the wooden center. And clearly, it is deficient in many ways. And I think the master plan is to be complemented and I think documenting some of the deficiencies of French Square and also beginning to point to some of the alternatives that could be done by the town to really significantly enhance French Square's contribution to the town center. It started off, for example, something called Phase 1 for French Square, showing, for example, what could be done in French Square with a significant amount of beautification, lengthening and connecting French Square to Hagman Road, for example, as an intermediate first step. They described it as a water exit, which would have the potential to really, you know, significantly enhance the pedestrian access and pedestrian friendly aspects of French Square and enhancing the visitor's aspect as well. I'm very impressed with that as a potential first step. They alter then, the master plan also points out, illustrates a potential second step, which is kind of intrigued also, built in on Phase 1. Where, for example, French Square should actually be physically enlarged by extending it towards the old sandals, as I refer to them today, and then redirecting traffic from the existing street that don't buy the side of sandals and then redirecting that to two-way traffic next to the set of businesses on the other side of French Square, showing how that could actually work. But in neither option, one or two, that is referred to, for example, Hagman Road as a precursor or as a precondition or as a requirement to bring about this major improvement in French Square. Much preferable, in my opinion. And why the town, for example, decided to go to it and to skip over these much more intermediate first steps, going right to Hagman Road, what I'd call a draconian measure, first is puzzled. So, so anyhow, I just want to start with that point and look forward to working with the council and other appropriate folks in the town.
Do you want to leave yours with us?
Yes, if I could. And I, only because I decided and ran out of ink just this morning. I'll leave it with you.
Thank you.
And I look forward to working with the town on these kinds of beautifications.
During this trial period, this is the time to make comments. This has been being studied for months, maybe years. And, you know, there have been many hearings. But now that it's crunch time and that's up, if there's complaints and if there's problems, now is the time to come forward with what your problem is. So if you want to change.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Steve Paley, Precinct 5, Adam Street. In the proposal or at least the conceptual plan of the center revitalization project, Adams Street, the reversal of its direction was not on there. It was added. And it was added by a sitting counselor. I don't believe this person is a traffic engineer. And I want to go on record as saying, changing the direction of the one-way on that street, not only is it preposterous, it's the most dangerous thing you'll ever, you're ever going to encounter. Because what you'll do is take the danger of taking a left on Bartlett to Pleasant and changing it and putting it on Woodside to Adams. If anybody has driven down there the one-way, not that I have ever done that, chief. You will know that it's barely impossible to take a left onto Woodside because you can't see what's coming at you from Woodside. Not only that, there's 100% opposition from every resident on the street. We've all been talking about that. We're extremely opposed to that. It'll, it'll really hurt our quality of life. And I don't know what the game would be. It's an extra few yards to go up to Pleasant Street and make the loop around just the way it is right now. Changing the direction will have an extreme negative impact on Adams Street residents. That's what I've got to say.
Anyone else, gentlemen? Come in.
Steve Dalton, Precinct 5. One of the things that I've been seeing over and over from people about, again, the Hagman Road closure, is the loss of parking spaces. And I, I understand that it's a sentiment among many in the town that there isn't enough parking in the center. And the thing is, there is data to actually refute that. The data indicate that something like 40 or 50%, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but something like 40 or 50% of the available parking is being used at any given time in Winter Park. And a healthy urban center or town center like we want has something more like 80%. So I think those two numbers might be off by a few, but it's about 40 to 50. The way it is now, and we want it to be around 80. And I, I can accept that those numbers are true. But I think that there's a lot of confusion in the town about where the spaces are that aren't being used. So, like, I can think of a few spots, you know, the, the parking lot next to the ice rink. That's not being used. It's largely empty. There's the parking lot behind the Bank of America building, which is not being used. But I'm actually not sure, is that a private, private lot? Okay. This, it seems like there's, there's a disconnect between the impression that the town residents have about how available the parking is and the, the numbers, because they're very different. People think that there's no parking. And that itself, the impression itself, is important. Because people are not going to be able to get on board with this, no matter what, if they have the impression that it's taking something valuable away from them. And if it's actually the case that parking is available, it should be made obvious in the town by having some signage, directing people toward better parking, maybe having better access to the center from parking lots. For example, the parking lot right in front of the skating rink. People zoom down Pauling Street a lot. And it's one of the better crossings in the town. But people still really go fast down Pauling Street. And if it were safer to get from the rink parking lot across the street and access the center, access French Square, then that would become a more viable option for people parking in the center. So I don't know if that's included in the portion of parking that's not being currently used. But to my mind, stuff like that is a really good way to make this project make sense to people. Because if the numbers add up, but the people get a bad impression, then everybody loses. You know, if there's some simple signage put up, maybe a lighted crosswalk like the Residory Heights, where you can press a button and the crosswalk illuminates along the ground, indicating that pedestrians are crossing the road, it becomes safer to cross Pauling Street to access that. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Suarez. I've worked at Andiannos down the center for 20 years. In reference to what he just said, we have children, elderly. There's no way an elderly woman is going to park at the skating rink and walk. A woman with a two-year-old child is going to walk. Snow, rain, there's no parking. There's no way the skating rink should even be an option for the center park.
Trump in the mental precinct three. Are we going to have a hearing about the petition that came forward? Or are the only comments you're going to take are from open?
Public comment, right now.
This is the whole discussion about Hagman Road is going to be on public comment. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
I mean, this whole, I've been to both meetings and I've been accused of not paying attention. I try to pay attention. I've come across a lot of people in this town who tried to pay attention who didn't know anything about this. And this thing about parking, I understand this study and I haven't seen it, but they included things like the Metcalf Square parking lot. I haven't seen it, so I don't know. They included the Cummings parking lot. Nobody's going to park, that's not the center. And I counted them. We took away approximately 50. It might only be 45. But there's too many parking spaces to take away. And at the second hearing, Mr. Calath said that it's not, it's not, this $2.3 million, we're not going to lose it if we open up Hagman Road. And you correct me if I'm wrong, is we just have to have it re-engineered. This is not saying, and it's not saying to leave it closed for 60 days either. These businesses are all suffering and it's going to be worse. If you can't find a parking spot, you can't get through the center, you're going to go someplace else. But again, I, all these people are here to talk about this and the only way we're going to do it is public comment?
That's what we, yeah, absolutely. We do have petition on the agenda in two places, but this is the place to talk about it. We're going to accept the petitions, period. There's not going to be conversation outside of public comment on the petitions.
Well, I was a town meeting member for a long time. I miss town meetings because the people in the town ran the town. And if the people in the town can't tell you counselors that we don't like this in a majority and you guys do something about it, then there's something seriously wrong. Because I only met two people that think this is a good idea. And they're on this committee. And I know they, I'm sure they tried to do the right thing, but they did not get enough public input. They didn't get the businesses people on board. The business people, I'm informing people in the center, I'm here every day, about this. And they didn't know anything about it. And they'll all tell you that. That's where this petition came from. But it's, it can't be just ignored. You can't go out of here tonight saying, we're going to take it under consideration. You have to pay attention to what the people want.
This is why we have public comment. So everybody can vent, say whatever they want. We're listening to you. That's exactly what this is about.
I mean, I hear what you're saying, but venting is not a dialogue. There needs to be a conversation between everybody about how people feel. Everyone standing up and making isolated comments to which no one replies is not effective, I would think, right? Come on.
Linda Daniels, Precinct 2. And I'd like to say I'm in favor of the plan. I think a lot of people on a lot of committees, parts of our council, everybody has put a lot of work and time into this proposal. To the people who went out and got the grant, I'm really thankful. It shows our government is moving forward. And I just think people should give it a chance. Change has got to come once in a while. Give it, try it. Go with the experiment. Why go off the handle before anything has been decided right now? Thank you.
Mr. Lucero, please, on forward.
So Michael Lucero, Precinct 6. Can't say, I know a lot of work has gone into this, right? But I keep hearing all the time, this is crazy, I didn't know about it. This is, this is foolish, I didn't read about it. And then even tonight, we have the person who started this petition against it, who actually didn't even know it was a pilot. So the question is, like, how can you make up your decision of whether or not you're for or against this if you don't actually read it? If you don't show up, you know? So that's why it's a study. We can have that great dialogue when we have the information. But jumping off to the conclusion that you know what's right or wrong on either side doesn't matter is, is just nonsense. That's the worst-case scenario. When you were in school and you got assigned a book and you didn't take the test without reading it. But we're trying to get the best-case scenario here by actually doing a pilot.
Is it your baseline deal of three years old?
It's not three years old.
No?
Yeah, so there's, there's lots of... It's not, it's not a back and forth.
You know, the tools in the mass pipe were a pilot program.
This is not a cross-conversation, all right? Are you done, Mr. Lucero? All right, Mr. Falvo. Identify yourself, please.
Jerry Falvo from Precinct 6. I once stated the opposite. I'm not an expert in transportation. As a matter of fact, I've been in transportation on the committee for about three, four months. But what I'm seeing tonight is déjà vu. It reminds me of what happened in 1988. Just to give you a little bit of history of that. 1988, myself and Jeannie Belcher, who at that time was working for the bank, were co-chairpersons of the center revitalization committee. Now, we started off small. All we wanted to do is spread out the pavement that you see now in the center. And because there had been a fatal accident on that particular parking, we changed the parking right in the center as a curb. Each step of the way, we were met by the businessmen in the center who stated very argumentatively that that's the worst thing we could do, those type of improvements, that we're going to lose our business, we're going to have problems. As a result, two things occurred. One, we didn't accomplish all our goals, we were stopped. By the way, at that time, I think even the Board of Selectmen, there was dissent in there. And the second thing was that no one lost their business. Now, getting to this point here. 31 years ago, we attempted to make some type of changes to improve the center and overall improvement in the town. We did partially. I won't say we were successful. Now you have the same thing. You have new residents coming into town and residents that have been down all this time. And what they're saying is this, our main objective must be to improve the business in the center. That means bringing in more business in the center. And in addition to that, with the change in the zoning, the center zoning district, to add living, residential living on the upper floors, bring more people, to attract therefore more businesses. One of the things that has happened in the road projects, and again, I don't know whether it's good or bad yet, I'll find out. But on the Hagman Road project, plans are to make it an area where there will be a little greenery, benches, places to attract people who walk and people who also ride bicycles. Which, by the way, sad to say, I'm not going to see too much of it in the future, but you're going to see more walking and more bicycles, no matter what happened to the study. So I'd say very strongly, let's not quickly defeat what was defeated 31 years ago. Let's give it a chance now. As Phil has said, it's a pilot program. We can't lose at a pilot program. If it turns out to be really nonfeasible, there will be many people who will voice their opposition, probably with better facts and views than you those in the opposing room were saying tonight.
Now, are you done?
Do I have to?
It's time for you to talk.
I agree.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Julie Waller, Precinct 3. I know I'm on the agenda to do more of a transportation update later, but since everyone's in the room, I just wanted to extend a public invitation to the downtown parking workshop that our committee, Transportation Committee and Town Hall has organized September 14th to address so many of these concerns. We realize this is so relevant. This is a pilot study. It impacts, it impacts how we all access the center and impacts parking. We don't have a strong parking management strategy here in town. And so I worked really hard to bring an international expert to our town to give case studies and best practices for how we can manage parking in a way that meets our demand while also facilitating the type of business activity that we want to see in the center. in the center. So, I hope that you all attend, it's on the town website, next Thursday at five-thirty at E.V. Newton School, maybe somewhere bigger if everyone wants to come, but, um, hot topic, the more informed we are, the better we'll be able to make decisions and have the kind of center that we all want and deserve. I have more updates, um, later, but since this is a hearing and everyone's here, we wanted you to all go ahead.
I see a hand sticking out above the door. Come in, please.
My name's Jeff Turco, precinct two, can I just make a suggestion that if you took a brief adjournment and cleared some of the chairs here, the people in the back here and the people in the back that can't hear, most of the discussion might be able to then squeeze in and be able to hear all of the discussion, every time a plane goes by, nobody back here can hear anything. And we just moved some of the chairs up to the hallway, you can get everyone in the room so everyone can hear.
Okay, I, I was planning on taking a recess at eight o'clock, so I will still do that, uh, anybody is free to leave anytime they wanna leave.
But it's more the people that wanna stay in here that can't, that are, because of the planes.
There's some room here if anyone wants to squeeze in.
And, and they can come up front and stand, I mean, there's a whole area in here. Come in, come, come right in.
Tight, come on in.
Come in, move all the way over to, look at all the room over there. Anybody else? Is there anybody else outside the door? I mean, there's a lot of space right here.
I would recommend keeping the door open, though.
Alright, any other public comment?
Suzanne Martucci, precinct five, I just have to speak out as a business owner and say that I am behind this, um, I follow the meetings, I'm, I wanna see where this goes, we, we have to see where it goes, concerns are a hundred percent valid, but this is obviously under scrutiny, we need to see where it goes, it's a step in the process, so we have to do this, like, there's a goal in sight, so this is just a step, so, like, hang on, that's all.
Bobby, I don't see, I don't, a lot of elderly people in this town, and they don't, they can't walk from the, I hate to name it, to Judy Palace, to people who nail, nails, and, um, there's just too many parking spaces lost. You took two, one in front of the dentist office, one in front of the services, why? I have no idea. It's two right there, there's just no parking, no, no reason in the world. Then you have, you get services, people who brought their kids off, it's gonna be a cluster. Gonna be bad, that's all. And if you go down the center at night sometime, anybody, it's dark as hell, there's no lights down there.
I noticed that there are all the lights on Woodside, and it's pretty dark coming down Woodside, and then, somebody should be looking at that. Sit down.
Jack Doh, precinct three, there's a lot of talk about parking, lack of parking for people that use the center. Recently, there was a developer that was looking for sixty parking spaces to develop a piece of property. There are other developers coming into town that want to develop property down the center, which will only increase the number of vehicles, so until we make this a progress, I'm suggesting that we keep as many parking spaces as possible. If there's six hundred parking spaces there now, I don't know what the number is for new residences being proposed, but it's anywhere from a hundred to three hundred new residences people are talking about. Where are these people gonna park down the center? So I think you have to take into consideration future development in automobiles, not what we're counting today, or three years from now, or three years in the past, but you have to consider people that wanna make developments, and they're looking for parking spaces. I think someone wanted to develop a theater, and because they couldn't get parking spaces, they pulled out of developing a theater, so that just gives you an idea of parking spaces needed, and so I think you should consider all parking spaces until, until like I said, maybe the automobile industry changes.
Thank you.
Mr. Dimes, precinct four, I go back further than Jerry Falvo. I've been gone for quite a while, but I am very, very concerned. The fact is, during my time there, and some of the developments down at the center, mile ones, Hagman Road, and it was done to try to get more activity, and it did. The point here is, we are at a point, at this point, as I can see it, and study in the master plan that's been submitted, which three-quarters of it is nothing but comments about other towns and what they did, but the point is, that until the undesirables that are in point at the center, which obvious to those know, meaning the repair places that cannot be adapted to such use, as to open up the center to make it a very viable walk road, whatever you wanna call it, area. And we're so far away from accomplishing that point, that we are too far along in trying to develop the center. The closing of Hagman Road is probably one of the worst things that could be done. It was done with very thoughtful, and it materialized by taking small little businesses, we got Citizen Bank from it, we got other things from it, and it's a viable road of leaving, leaving the center. It was very, I thought it was kind of interesting the other day, I went down the center, and of course I went down Woodside Avenue, and I thought, oh, I can take a loop around, and I said I wouldn't do it because I'd probably get my car smashed, but then, I went, and then of course Hagman Road had been shut off. So I said, okay, and what was the outlet? The outlet was to go by the front of Jerry Falvo's business, where the old theater is, and Jefferson Hill coming down, and that was the only way out, and when you get there, believe it or not, guess what? A policeman was taking, taking cable to traffic there. That was the way of getting out of the center. Now that is so far unbelievable, it should never be done. I'll bring back at the old timer, that we did accomplish during the years I was in office, many, many things, was that the closing of Hagman Road should not be, it should be opened again and let it transit way, and when we get to the point where we can see that we got viable ways, or making the center attractive by getting the unknowns out of there, that are joking at that, uh, no one's gonna go into the center and think it's a marvelous thing when you've got an ordinary bear here, you've got an ordinary bear here, you've got an ordinary bear here, they have to leave and take control of the center, and that's gonna take some time. So I'm saying, gentlemen, Hagman Road should be opened again, and let's get started the other way.
Anyone else, young lady?
Jeanette Roy, Bank Street, um, I just wanna say that I'm actually in favor of the closure of Hagman Road. Um, I know, I mean, if you walk through the center, it's, it's very clear that there are so many vacant buildings, and what we have right now is not working, and I know that change is difficult, and I know that we have a very wonderful community of elderly and young families, and we need to think about, you know, first of all, the safety obviously for them, they will, you know, the elderly, yes, perhaps it's a bit further of a walk, but once they get into the center, they'll have much more accessibility, um, and we need to try something, because the, the town is hurting at the moment, and something that could help bring livelihood and business and development into the center, something needs to be done. So it might not be Hagman Road is the best choice, I don't know, but we need to try it in order to see, and I think, um, we need to just be patient and give, give the people who have given a lot of thought to this a chance.
What else do you have here, Paul?
Astrid Lyons, I'm precinct three, so, um, I wanted to do, to make a couple comments today. The first comment is, it is not only parking and no parking, there are different parking zones, there's the ability to create parking that is handicapped, limited, there is the ability to create short-term parking spots for people that want to run, quick errands and then leave again, so that those spots are available for these people, and the other spots may open for people that have longer business. And I think these kinds of things are important to assess, how long are people spending in the center, how many, how long are people parking in the center, are people parking in the center, how do they get there, how do they leave, how's the traffic flow? I'm a scientist, and I, I think that you need pilot experiments in order to assess if something has a good probability to work or not, and nobody here is saying, and I don't think anyone on the Transportation Committee, on the Town Council, or any other person is saying that this is the way to go. This is an experiment, it'll last two months, maybe shorter if it's not working, because pilot studies can be terminated prematurely as well. And I just wanna tell people to be open-minded, I'm actually originally from Germany, and about fifty years ago, I had that discussion actually with my mom just yesterday, who is visiting from Germany right now, the same discussion happened in Germany, in small towns about fifty, forty, fifty years ago, when people started talking about implementing pedestrian zones, green zones into small towns, mid, middle-sized towns, and large cities, and people have exactly these concerns, there will be no parking, there will be no business, there will be no people coming, where should the elderly park, where should people with children park, where should people with their handicap park, how should deliveries happen to the stores, that's also a major concern for the business owners. And they found solutions, they found, you know, nearby, very nearby, you know, handicapped spots, short-term parking spots, they found, they, they created parking, they created time limits for deliveries, for example, from eight to ten, delivery trucks can access, or handicapped people can access, or, you know, certain types of businesses can be accessed, like Citizen Bank, I believe there is access to drive-through right now. So there are ways to do this, there isn't only black and white. And the other thing I wanted to say is that there, you know, my parents visit here, and they walk the town, they actually went to dinner at JW's, and they were talking to the waitress and saying, we're visiting Winthrop, and there was a person at the neighboring table, a citizen of Winthrop, saying, I can't believe you're spending your vacation in Winthrop, isn't that really sad? Isn't that what we wanna hear here? A citizen of this town saying something like this. So the town needs to be walkable, if we want people to come over with a ferry and access our businesses, they need to be able to walk to places, they need to be able to bike to places, they need to be able to even like maybe rent a bike and bike around town. The other thing is, I have children, I go to the center to do business there, I go to banks, I go to hairdressers, I go to nail salons, I go to Robin's Nest, I go to whatever store you might have there, I would go to any store, even if I had to park three blocks away, even if I had to bike. So there will be people that will be coming, even more so than they are now, because it will increase the accessibility. And I think the, the success for a, you know, pedestrian area, green space to work, is that you create a space that everyone can enjoy, and I think this communication that's starting now, that people are, there might, might have been a lack of communication, I think that needs to be acknowledged, um, but I think that that's happening now, and that's very important, because we need people's input, we need your input, we need everyone's input, not only young families that wanna change, we also need people to hear people that, that have concerns, and they might be legitimate, but we need to address them, we need to experience them, and we need to address them.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Charles Seltzer, I think I'm precinct one.
Come in.
Yeah, I just moved here about a year ago, and I became involved in the Transportation Committee, um, I'm not gonna do any transportation stuff now, but, um, I noticed that there's a lot of people here right now who are very interested in giving their input right now. And we've been having transportation meeting, meetings, committee meetings, looking at facts, trying to get experts in, do a lot of stuff for, I don't know, like, three, four months. I think we've had maybe two people from the town come and say, what are you doing? Here's what I'd like you to talk about, here's what I'd like you to consider. And I love the, the energy and the emphasis and the amount of people that are here tonight to talk about it, but if you're curious about how to engage with the town government, find it out, all the stuff's online, the committees meet fairly regularly, their minutes are posted, their agendas are posted, and you can participate. So, please don't feel that this is your only opportunity. I don't know exactly how you interface with the counselors, but I do know that you have an opportunity to interface with the committees, uh, probably much more so than, than you are aware of right at this meeting. So, check it out, um, it's cool to get involved, and, uh, you know, more on the Transportation Committee later, but, but please don't feel like this is your only opportunity and you cannot talk to anyone. I think it's a participatory, participatory type of government, I think we just moved to it several years ago, so everybody's kind of figuring it out, but get involved, ask some questions, but, you know, these large formats definitely make it hard to feel like you participate, so get involved like maybe in the other feeder meetings, there are quite a lot of them on quite a number of topics, as you know, Parks Committee, Safety, Transportation, we have what, like, six or seven on the agenda, but, you know, anyway, that's my comment for basically everybody.
Thank you.
Linda Bressard, I don't know my precinct, what made you up.
Chairman Fox.
I am not, I, I admit, I am not terribly familiar with this pilot project, um, but I do wanna say that I am in favor of it, only because we won't know what will happen unless we try this, and I agree with what some of the people here have said tonight, that we don't know what's gonna happen, and having renovated some of the parks in Winthrop, we saw a lot of resistance with every single park we did, which shocked me, um, there was a lot of protesting, there was petitions going around, don't let them do this, it's gonna be a disaster, it's gonna be awful, there's gonna be cars everywhere, there's gonna be people everywhere, and, oh, it's gonna be a nightmare, and it, it was shocking to me how much people fought it. And I've only lived in Winthrop less than ten years, but from what I've seen from not only our projects on the Parks Committee, but also from other projects I've seen around town, the TPW projects that have been going on, I've seen a lot of people riping about what the TPW's doing, I love what the TPW's doing to this town, putting up those beautiful wooden guardrails around the parks is wonderful, doing the piping over, which is fantastic, doing the sidewalks, fixing the sidewalks, all these things, all these small, they seem like small things that are inconvenient to us, but in the broader, bigger picture, we have so many new families pouring into Winthrop, I meet new people at the parks all the time, we just moved to Winthrop, we're thrilled, my kids are gonna be able to go to this beautiful new school over here, and their people are thrilled about all the parks and all the, all the sidewalks being redone, and all the activity going on around town. So I, I do understand I'm not downplaying what anybody's feeling, everybody's feelings are valid, but we are not gonna know what's gonna happen unless we try. I mean, look what happened with the parks, they didn't want it, they didn't want it, they didn't want it, and they came out beautiful, and there are all those people that were protesting, I'm like, oh, this isn't too bad, this is, is pretty good, I like this. So, you know, maybe this won't work, but we don't know unless you think it's practical.
Thank you, Linda.
Ken Goodwin, precinct two, I would just like to say, I commend this idea, and I appreciate the hard work, and all the data that's been put together and analyzed and brought forward. I would just say that everybody can agree in this town that the town center is dysfunctional, it is, I mean, you could say that it, it works for the most part, but there's a lot of deficiencies, and we could all agree with that. I say give it a try, I support all the businesses, I want all the businesses to survive, but I also want them to thrive in the years ahead, and that's the key here, I think, we've just seen too many businesses coming down. And yes, there'll be growing pains, it's gonna be different, it's gonna be something that we haven't really experienced, especially if you've lived here your entire life, and you're just used to just driving up to the Pizza Center, or to CVS, or whatever, but over time, I think this could possibly work, and we're talking about the betterment of the town, not just a few people, a hundred people, or twenty people, or thirty people, or five hundred people, it's gonna inconvenience, but we have, we really have to think about the betterment of the town, and how we're gonna improve our businesses, and improve them in a way that they're gonna survive and thrive for many, many years to come. So I'd say, move forward, try it, and if it doesn't work, keep trying and keep trying, and get the center working and going to a fashion that it's a vibrant town center. So I applaud.
Bob Carroll, precinct six, I'm a member of the Planning Board and was the chair of the Economic Citizens Advisory Committee, that helped with the help of a lot of you in the room, create the master plan. And I, I understand a lot of frustration that's going on here, because, you know, the master plan had in itself, you know, three major kind of meetings of the minds of everyone in town trying to get together and throwing in town trying to get together and throwing ideas against the wall and then bringing in experts to try to, to kind of find a path forward. Are we going to get 17,000 people to agree? No way. But are we going to get close? Maybe. And so that, that helped start us at a framework and then that framework is something that we can build on to go get grants, like the wonderful grant that we did get for the infrastructure. So what I think we're, what I think the growing pains or the kind of, you know, heartburn we're having here is that we were doing some work as a town, again, I would say "we." The town is doing some work for infrastructure. And then it got kind of excited about some of the ideas that were coming out of the Master Plan about, because they were really seeing for the first time maybe how dire some of the trends were about we're losing population, we're losing business and all these things and they're trying to reverse it. So on the tails of trying to do some very necessary infrastructure to support the wonderful businesses we do have, it's, you know, what else can we do right now? And so, yeah, the Hagman Road thing, maybe that happened too fast or whatever. But I think right now, I think what is really important to have is what was just suggested earlier, is to have all this energy show up at those workshops. I know in the works is trying to get a landscape architect, so lots of energy going in under the ground right now, making sure the plumbing sewer infrastructure is all set, but not a whole hell of a lot of thought in what the benches look like and what the plant thing's going to be and which trees get cut, which trees get added. So that, those types of things are going to happen or likely, those things are going to happen and it's going to have more opportunity for input and it will be able to, with the help of the pilot and things like that, be able to assess what should go, what should stay, what parking spot is better to make a narrower crosswalk or which one should be safer 15-minute drop-off, you know, running CVS, right? Or so, so anyway, I think there needs to be more of a process because the Master Plan had actually shown that having community meetings was a good thing and getting buy-in from a larger group of people was a good thing. And I think, again, the Master Plan's not perfect, but the Master Plan got us going in a direction. And now I just think we need to use that format again while we sort of develop the details of, of this. And I'm not talking about which way the sewer goes. That's all well underhand. It's, it's just these things we're talking about, which parking spaces, where's the green space? That piece needs some love, needs some attention from a lot of folks in the room. So I thank you for that.
Anyone else want to be heard on the public comment?
One more. I'm Shannon Worthwick on Precinct Three. And I just wanted to come in and make a comment that my family and I are for the pilot program. I think it's important to, to go through this experiment and to see what we can learn from it. It may not work out. We may find some difficulties along the way and maybe we can take that information and, you know, put it into practice in a different way. I think that the downtown area has some really amazing aspects to it and some things that are very sad and unnecessarily depressed. And I think that anything that we can do to bring people, especially someone mentioned earlier from the ferry, to bring people into Winthrop Center and to generate interest in the center and the businesses that are there and to bring more businesses into the center is only going to improve the town and make things better. And I think it's also, I just want to reiterate a couple of points that were made too. I think that it's a very valid point that you can have short-term parking, you can have handicap parking. I think that that's, you know, one way to address the concerns about the elderly or people with young children who don't want to walk. I personally love to walk. I think it's a great idea to add green space. I don't mind walking a few extra blocks with my kids. Sometimes, you know, it's raining or it's snowing or I'm not in the mood, but I think overall, walking is a good thing and, and it's green and it's good for us and the healthier we are, the better off we are. That's it.
Anyone else on the public comment? Probably no. Second time, right? Short time then.
Can we put a, a vote on the ballot and let the people speak?
You can do it if you do it by petition the right way. Okay? I'll, I'll try to explain petitions in a minute. Because we did get two petitions. One petition specifically said it was under 8.5. That petition is not for the Senate bisistrations. It's to put, to make the council go out and bid to three bids. That's a petition that I don't think anybody here in the room is interested in. I think it came from the council. But is anybody here on the, on that petition? Okay? Because we, we are going to do that. We are going to pass a motion, put it out to three bids later in the day. The second petition that we did receive that was, I believe it was Matt's, right? That was received, and I think it's a motion under 8.6. There's three places in the charter that allow people to bring petitions. There's a free petition. There's group petition, which is under Section 8.4. There's a citizen initiative measure to start something to, that no council is going to bring. And that's done in this, in a different way than the Section 8.4. And then there's 8.6, which is to force the council to overturn what they did by putting it on the ballot question. Okay? And I think that's the type of petition that we received, but there were a couple of things wrong. First of all, the pilot program vote was taken August 1st. Under that type of petition, you have 21 days to file a petition. Your petition wasn't filed until August 30th, so you missed the 21 days. According to our legal counsel, if you missed the 21 days, it reverts back to an 8.4 petition. And under 8.4 petition, the council can take any action whatever it wants on. If you had done that petition and gotten in the 21 days, that would have been valid. But then you would have had to have signatures of like 10, 8% of...
3%, initially and then 5% later on in the subsequent...
Later on, yeah. So you need to get like almost 400 signatures to start it because that would be the 3% of the 12,000 voters. And then before it went on the ballot, you'd have to have another signing and get more petitions. Then you could put it on the ballot. So there are ways to do it, but, you know, you have to follow those three different ways to do it in the charter. And, you know, that petition wasn't filed, but we want to give everybody an opportunity to be heard, you know? And that's why I said, "Let's do it under public comment." If anyone else wants to be heard, please say so now, otherwise I'm going to close public comment and take a 10-minute recess. All right. Homeowner Person.
Jason Negrinos, Precinct Two. I just want to say what everybody else has said already. I think we need to keep an open mind and we need to make sure that the, the whole point of this is that change needs to happen. And I think this pilot episode is going to be a good thing to, to bring it forward. Thank you.
Mr. President? Can I just make one other statement because I have this concern about procedure? Right now, all we've done is a pilot program. So there's no, nothing in stone, nothing anywhere. In order to shut Hagman Road, we have to do a street discontinuance. We're going to have to have a public hearing audit to permanently close that street. So there's, there is a process. This isn't a one-and-done type thing. There is, this is going to be, there's a lot more to this. We change a street direction, that has, that requires a public hearing. We take out a stop sign or add a stop sign, that requires a public hearing. All these things require public hearings and notifications. So this isn't a one-and-done. This isn't written in stone. It's a pilot program. Pieces of it may work, pieces of it may not work. We just have got to see where it goes, but there's a lot more formality that goes along that's going to have to occur in order to do these, these pieces that fall into play or whatever falls into play. So it's not over by any means. There's no done deal. And like I said, you know, change Jefferson to a one-way, Hagman discontinuance, those all require public hearings, your council votes for each individual item. So there's going to be a lot of opportunity for anything that does occur.
Every bylaw change has to go to Rules Committee first and then it'll come to a public hearing. So there'll be at least two or three opportunities on any bylaw change that's proposed. And I am going to put...
Mr. President, just before you do it, it has to do with procedure and I think everyone's going to leave after this point, so I want to jump into one thing. Myself and the clerk of the town are in the process of putting these petitions together with language. They'll be posted on the website so the citizens can have some direction while, while they're filing these petitions in the future. Also, we do send out surveys. We are going to be sending out more surveys. Anyone who wants to be added to the distribution list, please notify Larissa in the Town Manager's Office, Wardcheck, and she'll add you to that distribution list and you'll get the surveys so we get input that way. Thank you, Mr. President.
Meeting's in recess till 8:30. Next, next part of our meeting is committee reports. And the first one on the committee reports is the Transportation Committee update. Do you, you ready?
I'm ready.
Please identify yourself and your committee and give us your report.
Julia Wallace, Precinct Three. I actually have a letter to go along with this update. We haven't actually addressed the council in full in a while, so wanted to just put together a little update for you as well for the remaining residents in the room. Thanks for staying and hanging in there. It's been a long night. I have some other updates related to transportation. So just, these are very exciting times to be involved in transportation and urban planning here in Winthrop, and I want to commend you all on behalf of the Winthrop Transportation Advisory Committee for your commitment to exploring new ideas and supporting innovative actions to increase access and mobility and economic activity in our town by improving our transportation infrastructure. So just here are a few things that we have been up to these last few months that are relevant and timely. Namely, first of all, the MBTA bus service and Charlie card issue. As everyone knows, at this time, we have these new buses serving Winthrop, but they're not equipped with Charlie card readers, making it impossible for people to board a bus tour from Winthrop using the same card that they use to ride buses and trains everywhere else in the system. Not only is this inconvenient, it is unfair. As Winthrop residents are forced to literally pay twice to access the transit system that many of them rely on, to work, school, medical appointments, et cetera, et cetera. And it's a barrier to tourism and attracting new residents, visitors, businesses to our town. I actually did some crowdsourcing on Facebook and got overwhelming amount of comments, people telling us how this affects them. It's pretty powerful, the number of people who are influenced and impacted by this inconvenience and inequity in our town. So we feel very strongly about continuing to push this with a T. We have been doing that for a few months now. There's still efforts going on behind the scenes to maybe find some old Charlie card readers to put on these buses. Nothing has turned up. We want to make sure that this doesn't get passed over and, you know, that he doesn't just think, "Okay, Winthrop's over it." They're used to not having the same level of access as the rest of the region. We'll just kind of move on and maybe they'll forget about it. We're not going to forget about it. We have too much evidence that it makes a difference. So we feel that we need to take our voices to another level. So Councilor Christopher and I actually have been in touch with Senator Montgomery and Speaker DeLeo to inform them of this issue and the severity of it on our residents. And they both expressed support for our town submitting a letter to the MBTA General Manager and Secretary Pollock to demand a solution to this problem in the service to our town. We've drafted that letter. I think most of you have heard about that and I hope that we'll be able to submit it in the coming weeks. And I'm willing to work with you in any way to tweak that in a way that reflects the town. Also, we've obtained a list of existing bus stops throughout the town that are used but not marked. And we're in the process of identifying exactly what, making a list and work with the T to actually get signed so that there's no phantom stops, so that the buses actually announce ones that are real and that every stop is marked. So that's the progress on that. Complete Streets Prioritization Plan, very, very exciting. Thank you so much for approving the Complete Streets policy. Worked very hard with the working group, Joe and the chief and the fire chief and Mike Delicio to come up with this. And worked with the consultants at Green and National International to submit just this past Friday, our Tier Two application for funding to implement improvements through our state Complete Streets program. So in this round of funding, we requested the maximum of $400,000 to implement key improvements in both high-demand, high-cost areas like French Square improvements and high-visibility, low-cost programs like simply striking some buffered bike lanes and improving crossings around schools to get some high, a big bang for your buck, as well as diverting money where it's, where it's dearly needed. So I encourage you to all read the prioritization plan. It's a really fantastic and robust laundry list, if you will, of improvements we can make to our town, to our streets, to our intersections over time to get us to be a thoroughly accessible Complete Streets community. So we are really looking forward to continuing to work with the town and DPW on implementing these improvements over time. The third one is about the middle school rezoning recommendations. We just want to echo the Economic Development Citizens Advisory Committee in advocating for rezoning of the middle school under Chapter 40R in order to both stimulate the high-density, mixed-use and mixed-income residential housing that we need to support successful development of our center, while also preserving affordability for Winthrop families, existing families and individuals, and ensuring that our schools are equipped to absorb this cost of accommodating for students. CBD traffic pilot study, I already touched on this a little bit. I know we've heard a lot of people, but we just also really want to commend you all for taking this bold strategic action to experiment with new traffic flows that favor safety and accessibility, change the way the public face is accessed and used in our center. We recognize this is a highly contentious public issue and urge you to continue to uphold the changes throughout the duration of the pilots. Changes to, changes to urban space often feel more dramatic than they are and give a period, given a period of adjustment during which time we introduce new and exciting ways to engage that space. For example, instead of just parking a car or driving through it, you can try enjoying a meal, playing games with your kids, meeting with friends, hosting street shows, et cetera. It can sort of spark people's imaginations and we can effectively assess the elements of the pilot that are working and which ones need to be revised or scrapped altogether. There's no way to know what's possible in our center unless we give new ideas a try. Certainly, a number of other land uses in the center will have to be addressed in order for this pilot or any positive redevelopment to be successful, namely parking management, which is currently mostly obsolete and inactive. And it's time to change that. We feel very, we feel very strongly about that. Which leads me to the last point, which is the downtown parking workshop. Couldn't come at a better time. I was devastated when we had to cancel it in July because our speaker got stuck in Chicago. But I think now is an even better time to do this workshop on September 14th. I hope we can all make it. Jason Schreiber from Nelson Niagara will come. We'll be coming in to give us best management practices, case studies on how to manage and implement parking management and policies to get the kind of downtown we want. A lot of the problems we are experiencing are very much perceived because it's really a free-for-all. And you heard from other people, some of the very simple things we can do to ensure that parking is managed in a way that manages the kind of downtown that we want.
Julia, would you please announce that September 14th, where and what time?
Okay, so September 14th, downtown, September 14th, Thursday, 5:30 PM at the E.B. Newton School, unless it seems like we're going to have a lot more people, maybe we can move it to a bigger venue. 5:30 to 7:00 in the live room, E.B. Newton School, Downtown Parking Strategies, Getting It Right in Winthrop. Let's do it. Thank you.
Parking available?
And also, it's, it's really late last night, working on that worksheet, you're going on that worksheet flyer about the, the pilot, because we just really wanted people to just know the 401. What is, what is happening? So I hope you found that useful and didn't think that we were trying to go rogue. Have been working with Newtown Manager and Joe on that. So I'm very thankful for these collaborative efforts and keep up the work.
In conjunction with that and your report about the Charlie cards, Councilor Peter Christopher had put a letter together that he had shared with the rest of the council today. I don't know if you all have got it on the email. And I'd like him to present that because I, I have discussed it as well with, with Senator, we have copied it. But I'd like to address this at the next council meeting and maybe take a council vote so that it's an official letter coming from the Town Council rather than just the individual letters from individuals.
Sure. So pretty much, I saw this as a pretty low-hanging fruit issue. Charlie cards on buses here in Winthrop has been something that we've never seen, but it really makes it more difficult for visitors to Winthrop and for individuals in Winthrop to connect to the greater MBTA system. There are workarounds that we, that we've been using for about the past five years. And essentially, I think that this letter will be most effective at telling the MBTA that this is something that we've all heard is an issue, a resounding issue as far as transportation. that we've all heard is an issue, a resounding issue as far as transportation. I've heard that as probably the biggest complaint about the situation that we have. The buses were a great step in the right direction, and we're all thankful that we have them and a cleaner, and they look like the regular MBTA buses, but once you step on, you have the same situation that you had with the blue and white ones. So while we acknowledge that that's a step in the right direction, I think that this will, as a council, you will be saying with one voice that this is something that we'd like to see. I talked with Councilor Luteri the other day, and he made a great point that if one of those Charlie card readers broke on any other MBTA bus, they would be replaced. I don't know why we couldn't find a couple of them here and put them on buses here in Winthrop. It's a very quick thing, I would think it should be. So all we're asking with this letter is that they look into ways that we can get that connectivity that every other municipality in the metro Boston area has, and hopefully, we can get something out of this, speaking as one voice altogether. Thank you.
So I'm going to ask that we put this on the agenda for a vote at the next meeting to see whether or not we send this letter away. One second. Okay?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made.
Second.
And seconded, all those in favor of putting it on next meeting, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimated. Okay, thank you. Next committee report is Finance Committee.
Mr. President, Finance Committee met August twenty-fourth. President and myself, Councilors Luteri and Boyager on the committee, also Councilor Christopher and CFO Mike Perez. There were three items on the agenda. The first was the transfer of eighteen thousand five hundred and forty dollars from the Town Council Reserve to fund the health and clinical services. That was passed unanimously to move forward to the council. The second, I'll do it thoroughly first. The second item is the transfer of a hundred and two thousand from capital stabilization for school capital purchases. That was also moved forward to the full council for vote tonight. And there was a motion for fifteen thousand dollars for the Carlin Center for Recruitment Services, the position of Town Manager. That motion was revised because the Finance Committee doesn't have the authority to recommend a contract, only fund it. So we revised the motion prior to, and that is to transfer twenty-four thousand five hundred from Council Reserve to special article for the recruitment of a new Town Manager. And that was also passed.
Two to one.
Two to one. Councilors Delvento and Luteri in favor, Council Boyager against it. And that's the report.
Is that your whole report?
Yep.
All right. Next committee report is a report from a Joint Public Health and Safety Committee and Rules and Ordinance Committee that was held, Council Calhoun.
Yes, on August twenty-second, we held a joint meeting with the Public Health and Safety and Rules and Ordinance Subcommittee. Meeting began at seven fifteen here in the Harvey Room. Present were Councilors Engman, Boncorrie, Varone, Delvento, and myself. Councilor Boncorrie actually sits on both committees. The meeting was well-attended and included Chief Jalehanti prior to this appointment of Town Manager, Chief Flanagan, Commissioner Alagui of Inspection Services, Public Health Nurse Diana Ferrettra, former Councilor Jeanne Maggio and MRC Coordinator, Leanna Rizioni from Casa, and members of the Border Health that Sue Woodcock from the Winthrop Transcript. On our agenda, it was the proposed reorganization of the Health Department into two coexisting enterprises, one being the Office of Health and Social Services, the other being the Office of Commission of Inspection Services. After extensive study of the existing capacities and challenges facing our community's public health needs, Town Manager, former Town Manager Jim McKenna determined that it's necessary to divide the administrative domains of the Border Health into two existing enterprises. First, the establishment of a new Office of Public Health and Social Services, and secondly, to retain the inspections of various health-related licensing and enforcement with the Office of Commission of Inspection Services. Therefore, pursuant to the authority of the Office of Town Manager, Town Charter Article Six, Section One, Town Manager McKenna proposed that a new Department of Public Health and Social Services be organized under the administration of a new Director of Public Health and Social Services and under the supervision and reporting authority of the Town Manager. This new office shall oversee the administration of numerous public health services and include the Substance Use Disorder Program, now called CLER, Community and Law Enforcement-Assisted Recovery. The Subcommittee's reviewed the Town Manager's proposed organization plan along with funding options, and several present at the meeting spoke in favor of the reorganization and felt the need and desire to expand our Health Department. There was no one there that opposed the plan. Public notice has been given, and we had a public meeting tonight, and we had more support at that meeting as well. If the plan has approval status, the new Office of Public Health and Social Services can be set up. Also during the meeting, an additional topic came up during discussion. Jeanne Maggio, currently the volunteer for the MRC Coordinator, asked if the MRC could be included in this new department. She urged the councils to hire someone part-time, ten to twelve hours, to attend to the administration needs. There is a lot of work and time that goes into this program. The MRC is strictly volunteer. The organization assists in the event of a health emergency, weather-related emergencies for residents, children, and pets, flu clinics, health education, and related preparedness in case of a disaster. Chief Flanagan, Alagui, and Chief Jalehanti attested to the good work the MRC is doing. Funding would need to be identified for this. Both the Public Health and Safety and the Rules and Ordinance Committees voted unanimously to support Town Manager's plan to restructure the Health Department as proposed and submitted. So we do have two motions on the table.
We'll come in all business.
Okay. And all of this paperwork, there are a timeframe that describes all of the work that the two care recovery coaches do, one male, one female. They'll all be online for anyone that would like to read them, and it's been ongoing since 2014. They started ten hours a week, now they're working thirty-five hours a week, and they have really had, the scope of their program has grown so much since it began, and they're doing a great job, and I hope that the council supports us.
And next report is from the Miller Field Committee. Is there someone here representing the Miller Field Committee?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have not had a formal meeting since our last council meeting, but what I will do, what we do do on a weekly basis is we send out an email to our committee members, letting us know what's going on this week and what's going on next week. So I'm just going to share with you some of the stuff, and there's a lot of work done, obviously, that you don't visually see that's done underground, but, for example, this week, what's going on down at Miller Field is the light foundation installations. The foundations for all the lights are being completed, are completed this week. The home, they're grading for the home bleachers to be installed. They're completing the installation of the field drainage to the Veterans Road endzone side. They started to work on the track drains, so drainage for the track. Continued stormwater work within Veterans Road, excavating electrical duct banks at the home bleachers, making, getting that ready. Next week, you'll see the home bleachers being graded, completed. The home bleacher slabs on grade will be placed. They'll continue installing the track drains. They'll commence with the first lift of the dense grade for the running tracks, so you'll start to see more of that coming to fruition. Excavating foundations for the concessions building will start next week, and also for the, continued for the electrical banks at the concession building. And also, the home bleacher delivery will be expected the end of this week. It will be stored at the Little League site, and the home bleachers are supposed to be going up the week of September twenty-first, and so it's, September, as we were told by our construction team, September is the biggest month, the biggest month of activity that you're going to see, and it's really exciting, and you'll see the track, the asphalt for the track will be laid later this month, and then there's a curing time before the actual track material can go on top of that, the finished grade, but you're going to be seeing a lot of work going on over the next three weeks there. And that is it?
Thank you. Next committee report is from the EDCAC Committee, Economic Development.
I don't know that that committee has met recently. They'll make a premature report.
Next thing on the agenda is our Town Manager's report.
Good evening, everyone. Obviously, Hurricane Irma is bearing down on the United States, and we're watching the progress of Irma as it hits Florida and decides which direction it might take up the East Coast or straight across to the Gulf. So he'll be watching that all week. School opened today. Safety tips are posted up on the Town Police Department's Facebook page for walkers, bikers, and drivers. Deputy Goodwin had two bike offices down at the Florida School. We did change a traffic pattern over the summer down there. We created a middle lane and a right-hand turn lane, so those offices are in the process of educating people where to park and where not to park. So we'll continue that for the rest of this week as a, anytime you change a traffic pattern in any district, it's an educational process we like to do before enforcing any of our ordinances. So the school was very successfully opened by the school department today, and I visited two out of the three schools, and all the principals said, as reported, it went well. I talked to Superintendent Lee this afternoon. She reported everything went well today. There's a motion that'll be in front of you, the Board for the Network Infrastructure Improvements, for three hundred thousand dollars, would request that to be sent to Finance, Finance to work with the CFO, IT, and also the superintendent on this. This is a mutual project between school and town, and it's a larger sum of money, and it's a big project, but it's to help us create connectivity and build our infrastructure more stable than we've had a couple of downages over the summer, and we want to eliminate those downtimes. But, you know, just caution, we don't want to lose or jeopardize E-rate, and E-rate is a federal rate for the schools' side of this project, so it's up to sixty percent reimbursement. So the E-rate has not been set yet, and we don't want to take any action until we're sure that the E-rate wouldn't be affected. The National Grid Senate Pipeline Replacement Project is in its final stages. I think they have like four more services to do, and National Grid will be pulling out. Veterans Road will be reopened hopefully by Monday of next week. That project on Veterans Road should be all set and done by then, I'm told by Gil Baines, so we're hopeful that we can keep on that spot to open that roadway. The AMI survey that we first sent out as part of our public meetings on the pilot project that we had at the E.B. Newton School came back very positive about the meetings itself. Everyone was happy and satisfied that we held meetings. A lot of comments that we extracted from that survey are being answered by myself and Joe, and we'll provide those answers back to the participants and also post them up on our website as well. The position on traffic pilot project, a lot of questions concerned, phone calls over the weekend, to me specifically. My comments have certainly been returned by email and text messages and verbally. I know the Town Council wants to close or push out any business. However, it is our goal and desire to increase business in the center of town. Increase in business is good for everyone and gives the entire town the benefits of tax revenue without an actual override. I wanted the pilot so that we could actually not blindly make decisions without resident and business owners and town officials actually seeing what the impacts are. If we did not do the pilot, we would just have stuck with the suggested design at the end of the project. The pilot was and is meant to generate conversation and receive inputs. We will be collecting surveys throughout the pilot and doing a full report back to the council. It has always been my position to work with everyone, and I stand by that philosophy.
By that is your statement to?
That was my statement over the weekend, that I've gotten emails and certainly some business owners down the center, very concerned about some Facebook comments that were patted around, so I wanted to clear and to stand on what the position I felt the council was, and I felt the position the Town Manager's Office was, to clarify and to ease some tensions over the weekend. Informational flyers, as Julia indicated, we worked on them over the weekend. We have a one-page informational flyer, and we're going to try to give it out to businesses. I asked Joe today to actually have those flyers turned into signs, as Steve Calhoun confirmed those barricades have actually signed posts that we can put in, so we can post it in several different locations down there that people know what we're doing and don't just see barricades. This is an opportunity for the entire business community and the entire community to actually generate ideas of what possibly could go on in that space. We talked over the weekend about takeout Tuesdays and having some music down there. People go to the restaurants and have takeout. So we're trying to generate activities in that space during the pilot, so everyone can see how it can be used and also generate ideas for future consideration to council. Walk Winthrop project, I'll just ask Joe to update you quickly on that, Morton Street project.
So, excuse me, sorry, just started coughing all of a sudden. Obviously, the Bellon Marsh Marine Ecology Park and Marsh Walk project is underway. It, I know from some folks' perspective, it seems like it took a little bit longer to get going. That was mostly two pieces. The engineering, the construction company had to make engineering submittals to, the engineering company have those approved, and while that was going on, there was a manufacturer slowdown. The manufacturer making the piles that will support the walkway and the new structure on the DCR property was slow getting us the material, but the material is on site now. The contractor started working. There was flex time built in their construction schedule, so we are not behind by any means. We're off a week on the original schedule, but we're still within, having substantial completion by December of this year. So the Upland Side, that being the park and then the new plateau structure, pavilion structure, will be completed by October, and the rest of the Marsh Walk and the connection to the cemetery will be done between the end of October and December, so it'll be all, it'll be done this year. We're on schedule. A good report from the contractor today that the piles went in as expected, so they didn't meet any unforeseen issues when they started driving piles, so that's good.
Thank you. The plea report is a request before the council for extension of time in the middle school rezoning. Joe can answer any of those questions. He attended that meeting as to that when you come to it. Larissa and Joe has also worked on the Winthrop website. They have a tab now on the front page for projects, plans, and presentations, all the center stuff you could find in one easy spot on the front page in the far right is a tab. And also, just, I'm sure you got this invitation, but September sixteenth, two thousand and seventeen at ten AM, the intersection of Main and Herman Street, there'll be a rededication of the Andrew J. Vigio Memorial Square, who was killed in action on September seventeenth, nineteen forty-four. Senator Boncorrie, as well as the Speaker, and Governor Baker will all be present during that time. It does mean that we're going to have some traffic diversions in place for that short period of time, probably going to be about an hour after all the speakers are done. So the deputy chief will work on the diversion plan, and we have a lot of offices that are willing to come and volunteer their time because of Andrew, the grandson, Andrew, has so much activity involvement on veterans, so we have a lot of police officers willing to come out and help us for.
Again, what day and time?
That is September sixteenth at ten AM. Include my report. Thank you.
Counselor, question on the, a couple of the things you mentioned on the center. Coming down Woodside, there's a stop sign you could go right or left now. Just if we could get some, you know, police presence down there, because a lot of people are just kind of rolling through that stop sign and not coming to a complete stop, I'm afraid, with civices there and a lot of kids around there, especially around this time of year with the schools getting back in. On the, coming down to the Putnam Extension by Cafe Delight, it's a one-way going out, and there's like a barricade kind of where people would be coming in. Has it been any issues with, like, big trucks coming down track? Because that's the only way out of the center, to make that left-hand turn onto Putnam.
Well, it's, if you go up Island as well, so there's two ways out of the center.
Yeah, but if you're coming down Woodside, it's hard to make that left-hand turn. I'm just wondering.
But they could go either way, and there hasn't been any reports. We did have bike offices. What we did with the bike offices, we used them at the school for the opening, sent them to the center to monitor traffic and congestion and report back to us, and then sent them back to the release time at the school in the afternoon and back to the center. So we've utilized our offices the best we can under the direction of the deputy chief. They reported back this afternoon, there was no issues in the center. I'll ask that specific question. The deputy chief can ask that to them first thing in the morning. I'll get back to you.
And I don't know when a lot of, like, deliveries for the businesses and Pepsi deliveries and stuff like that come towards the end of the week and just to watch that left-hand turn. Also, on the Parleen side of Hagner, okay, seems to be like an indentation, like the, you know, it doesn't come all the way down, because we know that there has to be an exit for the ambulance. Is that the way it is, if we're doing a study, is that the way it is intended to be, with basically that whole, it's kind of like a, you know, you have that whole indentation down?
No, no. The answer to that is no. On Friday, we made some observations, myself, the fire chief, and we declared that some of the design... of the design was not safe. So we rolled what Hagman would be closed and the exit of that parking lot was closed. We rolled the barricades back to the exit to allow people out of that Hagman lot. These people were trying to back up out of that Hagman lot, other people was trying to pull in, and then people were trying to use the drive-through. We deemed it necessary for public safety measures to roll that pilot back to that point.
So if it was deemed to be viable when the study's over, is that what you would suggest for the future of that?
I would, well, we would definitely suggest that there's got to be an entrance and an exit to that parking lot, yes, because that's the only way that parking lot.
So after the first couple of days, you deemed that the closing of the whole street?
First, yeah, first couple hours.
The first couple hours?
Yes.
You deemed that the closing of that whole street might not be viable?
We deemed that that portion of the pilot was not safe, to continue with that portion of the pilot, so we took immediate action.
Thank you.
Anyone else have questions with the town manager? Got it off easy.
I'll take it. Begin as luck.
There's no school committee report, but I would.
We haven't met since.
You have not met, okay. Moving on. The two petitions that were sent to us, the place of the agenda, I think we've discussed them, does anyone want to speak about petitions any further?
I would like to make a motion that on the, consider keeping Hagman Road open, that we put that on the agenda for the next meeting and set up a public hearing on it.
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay. Motion been made and seconded, I'm waiting for discussion.
And I'm just trying to, would that be like a permanent vote or to pull it out of the pilot program?
Well, I think, you know, we've had this not too recently ago with a vote that went townwide to close a tennis court and to create parking there, and we had a petition signed by not as many people as this, and the council took action on it immediately. So, you know, whatever action we take or don't take, that's up to the council, but I think the right of the citizens, the time to do the petition should be heard, so that's my feelings on it, that we shouldn't, you know, we should give them the same credence that we've given other people in the past.
That, I agree with the concept of the hearing or bringing petition up, I just don't, wasn't sure if we're going to be taking a vote onto.
I can't hear Nick.
I wasn't, I just wanted to, was wondering if there would be actually a vote to keep it open, I don't know, if we're just going to detain the petition, which I'm more than willing to listen, I'm just, later we'll take a vote at this time before the pilot's over.
I don't think, I'm not asking that we take a vote to change it, I think that we owe them their due rights to come in and speak more about it and have us learn more about it. You know, it looks like the pilot's going to go on for a specific amount of time anyway, and then if we, as Council Davento pointed out earlier, there's going to have to be motions made if this ever was done, if Hagman Road was closed, the council would have to make a permanent vote on that, but I'm just asking now that we do the due diligence of listening, giving these people the time that they deserve to come before the council and have a public hearing.
No, and I would agree that letting them have a public hearing would be good, but I agree also with Council Davento, it's not something I'd want to vote on, I'd prefer to wait for the pilot data so that we make an informed decision about what's truly best, but allow these people the, I don't know, more official way to discuss their concerns.
And I would, Council President, I would consider even amending the motion to maybe make it the first meeting in October where there's more, a little more data to be found, and maybe people could have a few different opinions or talk about it a little more concisely having it been open for a while. I mean, the next council meeting is.
Is it two weeks from today?
Is in two weeks from today, which is still the, you know, middle end of September, so I wouldn't mind making an amendment to having it the first meeting in October to give more time for people to digest what's going on.
Counselor Inman?
I tend to agree with Counselor Luteri, I think, I'm very much in favor of seeing the traffic pilot all the way through to the end of October. That said, I think having an official public hearing halfway through would make a lot of sense.
It wouldn't make more sense to have it at the end.
I think you're going to have to have it at the end anyway if we deem to close the street, we're going to have to have a public hearing on that, we got this.
I think it would be better to have it sooner, because I think if we don't do that, it may cause them to reengage with filing a petition to have, and we may be able to, with better communication, I think we may be able to come to some sort of understanding.
And it may be the case also that after a couple of, after we settle into the study for a couple of weeks, there are some legitimate concerns that come up or tweaks that we could make to the way the study is running, and that might be the appropriate time to assess.
Though it could be vice versa, and it could be running better than people thought.
Absolutely.
Did you recognize? Has anybody else wanted to speak? All right, I have a motion in front of me to have a public hearing at the next meeting, and that's all I have in front of me that's been seconded right now. Is there going to be an amendment to this, because I'm not in favor of that at all.
Did you make that?
I would.
Withdraw your motion and restate it?
I would withdraw my motion and restate it to be the first council meeting in October.
Okay. Take your motion, clearly.
I would like to make a motion that the first council meeting in October, we take up the discussion of a public hearing on the petition before us to keep Hagman Road open.
Okay, I will second that.
Ms. President?
Yes.
And I'm just thinking of possibly making an amendment to take the word "public hearing" out and change it to "public comment."
Well, that's what we already just did today with the public comment.
Well, on specific.
And we had public comment on a petition that was not filed timely and really has gone away until something else is done.
I think my concern is that somewhere down the road, somebody, and none of us would do this ever, would say, well, we already had a public hearing on the issue of closing it way back when, so we don't have to have another public hearing. I just, the word "hearing" is, I just want maybe one lawyer to chime in on that one. Will that jeopardize future?
We could always extend, we could always not close the hearing.
You know what, I am going to pull the motion out of order, because the petition has gone away, but at any time, next meeting or the October meeting, someone can make a motion to have a hearing on this road without bringing up the fact of a petition. You follow what I'm saying?
No, I just don't.
Does everybody understand that?
To me, we've had, in the past, we've done this on numerous occasions, most recently on the tennis courts, and you had 30 people come in and the whole council flipped their votes, and to not have these people have the right to have a hearing is crazy, my opinion.
Well, they had their hearing, and we have, the petition's no longer valid, I mean, it's gone. But we can have a motion to have a hearing raised at any time by any council and suggesting a hearing, but don't make a motion based on a petition that's not in existence now. That's why it's out of order. Follow?
Yes. Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we have a public hearing in regards to the keeping Hagman Road open at the first meeting in October.
Okay, so we're second to that.
I would second that for discussion.
All right, discussion.
Ms. President, and I'm going to go back to my hearing line, and that is, we're having a hearing on a motion to keep Hagman Road open, which means if we have, the way that's stated, we should be taking a vote at the end of it somewhere down the road to keep Hagman Road open, and I'm not sure if that's what the intent of this is, because we'll, I'm just thinking, how do you advertise a hearing without, what the motion, the motion is going to be to keep Hagman Road open, and after the hearing, we can't just dump the issue. We either have to take a vote or kind of restate it, you know, the wording is my issue.
Counselor Inman?
Could we, at the end of this, if we, for point of order, could we continue it until we, you know, basically after people have said their piece and whatnot, could we continue this until we have the data to make the appropriate decision? Is that something that's reasonable?
Reasonable to me is that we should let the program go ahead, find out data, then have this hearing, not just say we can have it October 5th out of nowhere.
My concern is, what we're stating is just too simple, keep Hagman Road open, is it all of Hagman Road, a portion of Hagman Road from number 1 to the 15, what is the actual motion would be to keep the entirety of Hagman Road open, which may bar us in the future from doing something else. What I would rather see is a hearing on, for public input on the traffic impacts of Hagman Road, or something stated in that fashion, so there is no vote yes or no to close the road, because, like I said, you know, once that motion is made, to clo, you know, in the hearing phase, to close the road or open the road, we have no parameters. And if we keep the hearing open indefinitely, you know, every, it's going to have to be on every agenda, every meeting we ever have until.
Counsel Calle?
I'd like to hear with the town manager how you feel about this.
Well, certainly, you know, we promised these, everyone that we're involved with, the chamber and businesses and residents, that this is a transparent process, and certainly the transparency has to come with the full report, the data counts, accident history down there, citation history, parking warnings that have been given out, and that's something that I'm not sure if we'll have ready by the first week of October. The state has loaned us these traffic counters, we have to bring them back to Stone Mass to have them extract the data for us and give us the data, so that, you know, that's going to take a little bit of time to crunch all this information, you know, involves, it's going to involve Mike Dallowiso, the deputy chief, I've asked a couple other people to be involved in the process of writing this report and presenting it to the council. So I would, I would prefer to have a public hearing on the report itself, because right now, the only thing the council did is take a intermediate measure to temporarily do this pilot. The long-term decision has not been made by the council, so that's my opinion.
Counselor Inman? I will withdraw my motion. Counselor Luteri?
I'll try it, I'll try it again. Well, I'd like to try to make a motion to review ongoing, the ongoing study and impact on Hagman Road for informational purposes only.
I second the motion. Okay.
October, the first meeting in October.
Okay. Stage of motion.
I'd like to make a motion that the first meeting in October, we put on the council agenda to review the ongoing study and the impact on Hagman Road for informational purposes only.
All right, do you have that, Denise?
Okay, you're second to that?
Second. Any further discussion on it?
So, I guess, the concern that the town manager stated was, how are we interpreting the data on, I guess, at this meeting, I mean, this is all raw data that we're not, and we don't have the complete data set, so that would be the only concern, I guess.
It's going to be a review of the ongoing project, stat with it.
Yes, it's just going to be, it's more of a factual thing, what people are experiencing, pluses, minuses, whatever, it's not going to be raw data, because we're not going to have the physical data, we're going to have visual data.
And that's why I support this, this will give it, you know, a little timeframe in, and it'll let the people who are living it tell us what's going on, and we could take the information as a midterm report.
As a midterm, okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, will indicate by saying aye. Those opposed? Just me, no. Okay. Votes in carries.
Do you want to be heard on the other petition? Although we are going to make a motion.
No, I mean, I think if you, go ahead with it.
All right, under all business, the first motion that we have is the Winter Middle School rezoning, oh, wait, that, yes, it is, Winter Middle School Site rezoning recommendation from the Economic Development Citizens Advisory Committee. We did not get that, what we did get was a letter from the planning boards asking for an extension of time to file that, and I would, I'd take a motion that we give them the time they asked for. Someone would make that motion?
Motion to extend the time for the planning board to discuss.
Is it a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing on all votes in favor, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, votes awarded. Next motion is a motion from the Finance Committee, and it is, I move the town council transfer the amount of $1,200,000 from Capital Stabilization Fund Number 964 to fund school capital expense for fiscal year 2018, and thereby create a special article in the general fund for said purchases, or to take any other action relative thereto. That was by the Finance Committee, does it need a second? Is there any discussion on it? Counselor Luteri?
Just to let everybody know, this is for technology equipment that the town had, well, had basically promised the schools when the budget process was being done and they were looking to make cuts, and we thought it was a good idea to try to make an investment in the schools. So, and this is just, like Counsel Davento said, more of a bookkeeping issue as to where the money's going to go, but it's for that specific purpose only, which is technology.
All those, any other discussion? Hearing on all those in favor?
You know what, Ms. President, I think we need a roll call, and that comes out of the stabilization account.
Okay, roll call, please.
Counsel Inman?
Yes.
Counsel Calle?
Yes.
Counsel Christopher?
Yes.
Counsel Luteri?
Yes.
Counsel Boyajin?
Yes.
Counsel Verone?
Yes.
Counsel Davento?
Yes.
Vice President Boncorie?
Yes.
The next order of business is a motion by Russell Sanford that the town grant permission to National Grid to excavate public highways and to run and maintain underground conduits together with such as stating and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary for the transmission of electricity. Said underground conduits to be located substantially in accordance with the plan here with marked Cross Street Winter. The following are the streets and highways referred to, Plan Number 24330520 Cross Street. National Grid to install 2-4 PVC conduit from pole 731 for service to the new ball fields or take any other action thereto. Is there a second to that motion? Any discussion?
Counsel Inman? Does anybody know where pole 731 is?
1731 is.
I believe it's right by, between the golf club and the ball field.
Where you went through the old T H B golf.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, votes awarded. The next matter of business is a motion by the joint committee, Counsel Calle, you have a motion?
Yes. So, the motion is that the town council accept as written, town managers' proposed reorganization of the Public Health Department to incorporate the CLIR program and to separate this department from the Inspection Services Department, or take any other action thereto. And can I just read one paragraph?
Sure.
Regarding the CLIR program, just again, so it's clear for everyone what this recovery coach role is. The recovery coach is, again, a male and a female. This role has been in place for approximately the last two years. Over the last two years, the roles have grown to become full-time, 35 hours a week positions. The role is to provide support, resources, and enhanced service delivery to individuals looking for recovery from substance use disorders. The importance of having both a male and a female are to. The importance of having both a male and a female ought to increase participation from the community by having a recovery coach that an individual may identify with. The intent of a recovery coach is to build a relationship as a peer and to provide the pathway, to the pathway to recovery. That means each individual is unique and will have different needs and a different history, and the recovery coach is there to assist the individual to find that path to recovery that will be most likely for them to succeed. Due to the need for service and the lack of available services, the recovery coach is integral in connecting individuals to the recovery network and bridging care between treatments.
The motion before us is from committee. It doesn't need a second. The motion is that the town council accept as written. The town manager's proposed reorganization of the Public Health Department to incorporate the CLER program and to separate this department from the Inspection Services Department or take any other action thereto.
Counselor President, I ask for a roll call vote.
Yes. Is there any discussion first? Hearing no discussion, we have a roll call vote.
Counselor Inman, yes. Counselor Callow, yes. Counselor Christopher.
Yes.
Counselor Terry.
Yes.
Counselor Boyajin.
Yes.
Counselor Barone.
Yes.
Counselor Davento.
Yes.
Vice President Moncorry.
Yes.
President Sanford.
Okay. The next motion we have under all business is a motion to now fund that CLER program that we just voted for. And the motion is, I move the town council transfer the amount of $18,540 from Town Council Reserve Funds to fund Health and Clinical Services Department supplemental budget expense for fiscal year 2018 or take any other action relative thereto. Since this came out of committee, I don't believe it needs a second. Open it for discussion.
Just a question, on the agenda, it's 18,450, and on the motion, it's 18,540. Which one is it?
18,540.
18,540. The motion that we made, 18,540. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, vote is awarded. Do you have the motion from the Finance Committee? There is a motion came out of Finance, and it has been, it was revised before it went into Finance, or since it went into Finance. But the motion is to appropriate $24,500 from the Town Council Reserve Account Number 965 to a special article for the recruitment of a town manager or take any other action thereto. Came out of committee, does it need a second? Is there any discussion? Counselor Boyajin.
No, the reason I had voted against it, because my concern was, I was hoping for, and it sounds like the council will do this, but to have three bids, basically, to have them and have them present to us so that we can pick the best, rather than go with a single firm. And I, I'm encouraged that the council is moving towards that.
By approving this motion, there is no individual firm chosen, and there will be a motion, or I will be directing the town manager to get three bids later on in the meeting.
Ms. President? And the reason that we changed the language was, the Finance Commission, the Finance Committee is, deals with finance, and doesn't authorize or recommend who will contract or.
Correct. Okay, all those in favor of this motion, see no other discussion, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, vote is awarded. Okay, we haven't did that. Okay, under new business, there are three appointments to the Middle School redevelopment committee that Council President Russell Sanford wanted to make tonight so that they could meet in this next meeting that's going on. And those three appointments are Sergeant Steven Rogers from the Police Department, Joe Demolovitz, and Paul Levy. Motion by Counselor Terry to accept it, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on that? These are Counselor Sanford's appointments to that committee. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, congratulations to Joe.
Thanks for your support.
Do we get a picture?
Not necessary.
All right, under new business, we had a motion that came before us by Counselor Boyajin to direct, there are no fewer than three executive firms assisting the town council selection of town manager. So I'm going to direct our interim town manager to solicit bids of cost and time as to how long it would take to do a selection of a new town manager from three different executive companies, and to report back to our council president, Russell Sanford, with those results.
Do you want these people in, or just do you want me to get the quotes and bids?
I want you to get the quotes and bids.
Along with the description of services.
Yeah, yeah. And then, Council President Sanford can deal with what you deliver. True. The next thing on the agenda is.
Does that need a, that's a motion, need a second?
No, it's not a motion, it's a direction. It will follow.
Counsel President.
Direct motion by directing it to happen. Okay? You see, the job of nominating a new town manager to us falls completely on the council president. The council president nominates a town manager to us, and we either accept him or reject him. But we can't nominate the person.
No, but in terms of the three bids.
Yeah, so Russell directs, Council President is directing to get three bids.
Okay.
And now he will return the three bids to the council president, who will decide if he was going to nominate someone, because we voted. Follow that?
Yep. I would encourage that all three firms do present to the full council so that we could better understand what their qualifications and whatnot, and ultimately, understanding that the president would make the choice, just to be more transparent with the public.
Yeah, but it's not the council's prerogative, it's about the president's prerogative. So, I don't think, he has to come to us. I mean, he can, but I don't, he has to. It's totally up to the president what he does with the bids.
And, but we have the right to reject them?
Yes.
So how do we make an informed decision if we don't know what they're going to do? I guess that would be my concern.
You do have the right to reject whoever the council president puts up.
Whoever the council president nominates.
For the town manager.
I see, not for the search.
On the bids.
Okay, I see.
On the search.
I mean, we'll probably get to see those bids and the description of services, is that?
We probably.
I'm sure, council president would distribute them.
I, we're not doing that school connectivity yet?
We'd ask for the, be sent to Finance.
Okay. Does Finance need to meet on it promptly?
No.
Or we're still, we're just gathering information.
Okay, thank you.
Do we want to send it to Finance tonight?
Yeah.
Out the information and the amount.
I request that, because there's some work that needs to be done behind the scenes.
All right. So, we're asking for a transfer for the capital, the capitals, from the Capital Stabilization Fund, our general fund, for the purchase and installation of equipment to approve the town and school connectivity. That is the issue that the interim town manager was talking about. It's probably a $300,000 expense, and it's going to connect the school with the town and.
Internet service.
All our telecommunications services.
Motion to refer to Finance.
Motion to be made to refer to Finance, is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the Finance Committee can put together what the actual visa. All right, we're open to public comment. Anybody wanting to be heard in public comment?
Do you want to turn to the Scholarship Committee?
Really? Guess what? We'll have to wait till next one.
Does that, $300,000 have to be public hearing?
No, that's going to go to committee, we've got some work to do on it.
Okay, any other public comment?
Thank you.
Hearing none, there's some public relations events coming up that we wanted to talk about. First one is September 9th. The Winter Culture Club is having music on the landing at 1:00 p.m. on September 9th. On September 13th, there is a Taste of Winthrop being held at the Winter Yacht Club at 6:00 to 8:30. That's an event that's run by the Chamber of Commerce. And on December 19th, is a joint public hearing with the Winter Planning Board to discuss the rezoning of the Winthrop Middle School.
Counselor President, I have one other public relations event. Trudy Van Corden reached out to me, hoping that I could announce that those who can for those in need will hold a six annual life issued resource and volunteer gym this Saturday, September 9th, at the old middle school gym on Pauline Street, 12:00 to 10:00 until 2:00. Organizations from, will be there from Boston and the North Shore area, and if anyone's looking for volunteer opportunities, it'd be a good chance to learn about some of the organizations, and there will also be children's activities and.
Is anyone else? Just one more that, I just wanted to let everyone know that the MRC is actually meeting tomorrow night for emergency repair in case Irma in regards to what it might do. So, they're still very active, and they've engaged everyone to meet tomorrow night at 6:30.
Yes, at the E O C next door.
Yes.
Any other public, well, public comment you missed?
No, I have another coming in.
And then, now, go ahead.
Hi, I'm sorry, I didn't know I was just speaking of public comments or how you like, but Casa has a few events coming up this month that I thought everybody should know about. On Saturday, we're having a basketball tournament on the Walton Street Courts. It's a sober basketball tournament to support the recovery community, so if anyone's around on Saturday and wants to come support the teams, the six teams that are playing, myself and John Hansen from the community are going to be kind of running the tournament. And then, Saturday night, the recovery community, the CLER team, is having a fans' dance recovery dance at the Senior Center for people that are in recovery, people that support the recovery community. So, come on down to the Senior Center, there'll be some food, and there's a DJ, and we'll just kind of be all hanging out down there, celebrating people's recovery. On the 25th of September, down at the Casa office, it's a Monday night, there's going to be kind of a resource sharing event, so we're inviting treatment providers, recovery services, and recovery supports, kind of all down to Casa, to share what they can do for the Winthrop community. So if anybody wants some information about that. And then the last event, which I think is something that was really important for me to share with you guys, is the October 1st, at the PSA Hall, we're having our first Winthrop Without Stigma Award Ceremony, where we're going to be honoring various people in the community that have spent a year kind of fighting stigma and addressing issues within the community. So on the Casa Facebook page or on our website, and I'll send you guys this link, but we're actually asking the community to nominate people in the community for us to acknowledge. And then Casa will acknowledge somebody for their Marion Lumsbury Community Service Award. So there will be kind of a dessert and cappuccino night down at the PSA Hall. It's at 6:00, it's, the first is on a Sunday. So, for anybody that wants to come, we'll be kind of honoring some community members on that night. And I'll send you the link if you have people in the community that you would want to nominate. So, thanks.
Any other public comment, not public comment, events?
Yeah, September 23rd, the I Heart Winthrop Festival. I don't know if we've had a completely public cooperation to create a festival like this before, but there's some, a lot of business owners in the Center Business District who have banded together to make this a reality. A lot of money has come in from the Center Businesses that chose to participate, a lot of sponsorships, dunk tank, photo booth, face painting, yoga, all sorts of fun stuff from 1 to 6. The real estate offices in town will also be hosting a town-wide open house that day, so every property on the market will have an open house right before the festival. And our goal in coordinating with the real estate firms is to get as many people who might be thinking about moving to Winthrop to see Winthrop at a peak festival time.
That's the 23rd at 1:00 p.m.
1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. in the new pilot program area. We will be using that space in its entirety. We have over 45 vendors from the world of ProLoC joining us.
One more event?
In a 5K.
Vice President, I was wondering, would it be worthwhile to have maybe the organizers of the event presented our next meeting, just so that it gets out there in regards to, you know, the.
I think doing a pretty good job on Facebook, but we'll kind of invite them. All right, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, I want to thank everybody for their cooperation tonight. We had a new town manager and a new acting council president.
Thanks to these.
Well done.
Thanks to these.